I can stretch out. Yeah, I had to incorporate this.
Call meeting order. Shelley can do roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. District one, Councilman Rios.
Here.
District two, Councilman Pastor.
Present.
District three, Councilman Lethem is excused. District four, Vice Mayor Stapleton.
Here.
District five, Councilman Gonzalez.
Present.
District six, Councilman Shipley.
Here.
Mayor Gamaros.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Shelley. Can you lead us in the invocation, Shelley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, and we ask that you bless this meeting and each person and family represented. We are thankful for this council and the time they make in their lives, be present when needed, and the time they invest in decisions that are made on behalf of our community. Heavenly Father, we pray that you would bless city staff. Please keep them safe and give them courage and confidence needed to serve this community. And lastly, Heavenly Father, we pray that you would heal the sick and brokenhearted. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Shelley. Freddie can lead us in the blessing.
I am a patriot of the flag of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with summary of current events. Mariano, we'll start with you.
There's been a lot of requests for people to volunteer across the region, and I'd like to just comment to you out there in Zoomland. Pick a subject that you like and get ahold of the various entities around town, including City Hall. Shelley, I put you on the spot there. And volunteer your time. The only way this region is going to progress is if not only paid people but volunteers work together to make this region a better place for tomorrow for the kids. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mariano. Fernando?
Mayor, I really don't have anything to report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Freddie? Thank you, Mayor. So this past Friday and Saturday, I was involved in the Cobra Valley Watershed Partnership. It's a regional partnership that focuses mainly on our watershed here in the region, Globe Miami. For those of you that don't know what a watershed is, it's basically how we gather our groundwater. So anything that falls from rain to sleet to snow on the mountains, as it melts and it runs off, it goes obviously into the washes, as you know, and ultimately makes it to the lower plateaus or the lower levels of the area, and it percolates through the ground, and that's what replenishes our water tables. So that's the real quick, short version of that. But this partnership has been going on for at least a couple of years now, and it's really starting to, I feel, have an impact. There's some great speakers. This last one was a two-day event. Mayor was part of it as well. And, you know, we talk about how we can protect our watershed and the things that we can do as community members to get involved. So I would encourage you to look that up. Linda, is that online? Do you know if that's a website? It is. So you can look it up. Cobra Valley Watershed Partnership. We encourage all of our public to become involved in it, just for the sake of just knowing what to do and what you can do as an individual to help protect the water of our future and well beyond our time here. So just look that up and get involved, like Mariano says. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Freddie. Mike?
Mr. Mayor, this week, I read in the papers that the number of COVID deaths in the state of Arizona has gone over 1 million people. The numbers, as we watched them here recently, they've been going up also. I would encourage those folks out there who haven't gotten their vaccination to consider it, because those numbers are real and those are people that have died. And just think about it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mike.
Mayor, I really don't have anything to add, sir.
All right. Thank you. I'll just piggyback on Mike's COVID comments. I'll give you the numbers that, you know, we get them weekly from the Health Department. Unfortunately, this week is the highest week we've had since COVID started in the Globe Miami community. Total Hila County has 280 new cases in one week. 161 of those are in Globe Miami. So more than 60, 65% are all located here. Globe had 99 new cases in a week, Miami 28, Claypool had 22, and San Carlos is doing very well. They only had 12 new cases for the week. They are showing, in our conversation with the Health Department, they are showing an 18% breakthrough in vaccinated individuals, but they're not getting severely sick like they would have if they didn't have the vaccination. So there is breakthrough, and 18% is Hila County. We really can't pinpoint the cause. There is several pockets in the community that have positive cases. The schools being one, not just one school, but several schools have pockets, numerous kids that are positive. There's a couple of parties that are attributed to high numbers of cases. Homecoming Dance was attributed to a lot of numbers in positive cases, and the church is also being investigated for numerous amounts of positive cases and exposures. This afternoon, we had an ad hoc meeting. Representative David Cook brought the committee in. Members of the legislature were here. It was 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., and I think it was a step in the right direction. This committee is to hear the community, hear the government agencies that represent them, to move forward in a positive direction, try and come up with a plan, improvement plan, on when we talk about fire management, when we talk about suppression, and when we talk about restoration. So hopefully, there's a report that'll be drawn up by it, and we'll see that in the future. First Friday, if you haven't been to it, this last Friday was First Friday again, another successful night. I think we had again over 50, 60 cars doing the crews downtown. We had more food trucks. We had crafts booths and stuff set up. So we had a lot of people, a lot of traffic downtown, planning more stuff for the next First Friday for December. Hopefully, we're going to include the UTVs and the ones that decorate their UTVs and have some sort of crews with them also. Just for the council tonight, Shelley has provided us with a motion guide. So I guess if we make a motion, whoever makes the first motion, if they can read the main components of that motion, so when they go back to review the recordings that they're able to capture, numbers and stuff like that, so it'll be important for documentation. And then the other thing, just a few things that we've heard from the public, when we speak, if we make sure that our mic is close to us, that they can hear it, and so people can hear what you're saying. So, thank you, and that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and no, thank you very much. Three things real quick, just to piggyback on the forestry and wildfire ad hoc committee meeting that was held here from 1:00 to 5:00. It went really well, thanks to good coordination between Shelley and our contacts and Danny and the contacts at the state. And kudos, double kudos for Danny, who's been sitting at his monitor since 1:00 today. And we'll be there for another couple hours. And so he's doing the long term. But no, it's really important. It helps us. We always want to work with our partners and our agencies and working with the state legislature and our partners down there gets us, you know, shows our team, and that's what Globe is about. Secondly, on Thursday, this Thursday is Veterans Day, November 11th, and let me make sure I got that right, yep, and we'll be closed on Thursday. In honor of that, just want to let people know, we'll resume regular hours on Friday. And then tomorrow night is session five of the six sessions of Citizens Academy. We had a rousing session four over with Fire Department. Everybody came out in the worst of the wear. And then session six will be here, I think, on the 14th or 17th? 17th. But I just wanted to let everybody know, it's been very popular, and we will be holding another Citizens Academy, session number two, in March of 2022. But it's never too early to get your application in with Shelley. And anybody interested, just get ahold of Shelley, and she can get you the line up with the paperwork, and make sure you qualify and hold your spot. And we'll just see how that goes. I hate to tell people to wait if they are interested now, and we'll make it happen. So I think it's been very enjoyable and appreciate everybody helping out.
What's the class size, sir? How many?
We're at 13, and I don't think we've had very few people who have missed a class. So 13, we will take up to, I think, 18 or 20.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I think it's kind of unmanageable. You can't do all the hands-on stuff.
When is the second session? Oh, I'm sorry.
Second will be March. We haven't picked days yet, but that's the schedule. We want to do a spring and a fall.
Will we be doing the same group, or will we?
No, no, it'll be a new set of applicants or a new.
No, I mean hosts.
Oh, that is, wow, that's, I have not determined that. I think it's up to council. I would say you should probably switch it up, though, a little bit.
It probably depends on your scores from the.
Yeah, there is a dress, you know, and a food score. But before we get in too much trouble from the attorneys for turning this into an item, and we will be on the first meeting in December, we'll be having the graduation ceremony hosted by none other than Councilman Gonzalez.
Yes.
So, okay. So that completes my update.
I'll have some words of wisdom worked up by then, Paul.
Right. I'm sure you will. That'd be good. But the food, you got to remember the food.
Just a couple more comments, Paul. With the holiday, Veterans Day, if we could put a PSA out, if people remember that when we have a holiday, the people, their garbage picked up on Thursday won't be till Friday, assuming, and Friday's garbage will be picked up on Saturday. That's usually how they run the holidays in the middle of the week, so they're aware of that. The other thing, I just want to add to the COVID, is our hospitals are reaching capacity. When we talk about Banner Health and Payson, they have 15 patients with one on a ventilator, 15, in intensive care, I think it was.
I love intensive care, but I know one on a ventilator.
One on a ventilator, and the hospital here is 10-plus patients also. So just be aware of it. It's out there. People are getting sick, and they're getting hospitalized.
Yeah. And, Mr. Mayor, just to follow up, I don't think the hospitals are any type of distressed, or there's any lack of absolute quality care, but it is predominantly active there. And the one change in the number, I think, that we heard in the briefing we had, was while the numbers are the highest, the actual hospitalization is down a little bit than the heights. So this round, people are not getting as sick as they were before, because I think that's 18% to 24% are crossovers who have been vaccinated, and they tend to ride it out much better. That's why you want to get your vaccine?
Mayor, can I?
Thank you.
I forgot to. So I'd just like to thank the city for letting us host Neil Carter, who's our new appointed legislator, to take over Frank. Frank Pratt passed away. He was one of our representatives, and he was a really great guy. Neil was fortunate enough to get appointed to his spot, and he came to visit our community last Wednesday night. So we hosted him here, and he was very open and got to, we had a good turnout. And it's important to get to know your legislators, because then you become real to them, and so when they have to make decisions, they can kind of imagine who they're impacting. And so it is good to have a relationship with them, and we're just glad we could host them, and thank you.
Thank you, Fernando. We'll go to committee call to the public, and this is a time when anybody can make comments to the council. It is limited to three minutes. We cannot respond to you at this time, but we can respond if you want to speak to an agenda item, and you'll have to fill out a call card. I do have one card here. It is Mary Lowery. If you want to come up to the microphone here.
It could go either way.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, council members and the general public as well. I'm Mary Lowery, and I work with Capstone Mining at Pinto Valley Mine here in the Globe Miami area. And I wanted to say that on behalf of Pinto Valley Mine Management Team, we're very pleased to say that our mine operations plan has been approved, which lets us continue to operate through 2039. This was a major accomplishment for Pinto Valley Mine. It's been 14 years in the making, five and a half years for the specific manager that was working on this. Tim Rolston couldn't be here tonight, but he knows that I'm part of the Citizens Academy and thought I might be able to thank you in person. This would not have been possible without the resolution that was signed by Mayor Gamaros, thank you, in April of 2017, in support of our mine expansion plan, to make sure that, at the time, 500 and now 700 people have good, high-paying jobs in the mining industry, their families have more security, more people can retire now in comfort and assurance from Pinto Valley, thanks to our expansion into 2039. So again, on behalf of Capstone Pinto Valley Mine, I thank you for your support of the local community, of our economic development, and of our people. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to say, a few months ago, proving that these things do pan out.
And Councilman Gonzalez, I hate to interrupt you, but.
Go ahead, sir.
With call to the public.
We can't respond.
Okay, I cannot. You're right. Thank you for that, sir.
We'll go to special presentations, ceremonial matters, and item A is a city of Globe will accept the donation of a 2002 Ford F-150 by the Tri-City Fire District, which will be used in the Community and Economic Development Department. And we have Chief Nick Renan.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'd just invite Chief Renan up, and I'll turn the time over to him to kind of give you a little background on how this came about, and I'll give it
Good evening, Mayor Gamaros and Council. I almost called you chief. Sorry about that. So there's kind of a backstory behind this. We were outside at Joe Bracchamani's retirement party, and I was talking to some of my staff members. We had a pickup truck that was donated to Tri-City Fire from Southwest Gas several years back, and we don't use it anymore, and I needed to do something. And Michelle Yurkovich is right there, standing next to me, and she said, "We can use a truck like that." And I said, "It's yours." It was a donation to Tri-City Fire District. I wasn't going to make money on it, so I told her, "We'll donate it to you guys. You guys check with who you need to check with, and if the city wants it, I'll be happy to donate it over to them." So she got back with me, and we did donate it to 2002 Ford F-150 with a camper on it. I met with Shelley last week. We notarized the title, and we've signed it over to City Globe. And it sounds like they're going to be using it for, I think you put it on here as.
Yeah, for Carl's.
Committee for Department, so.
It's going to replace his little S10 Bumblebee truck.
Yep. This is, in my feelings, this is what we need to do. We're cooperative partners, and we need to work together. We're a small community, and this is what we need to do. It's the right thing to do, and thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we did, it was checked out by Fleet. It also has, it's natural gas, can be powered by natural gas, but we'll probably use gasoline on it. But it's in good shape, and we're happy to take it on board. Got a couple more good years left on it.
Carl will be happy.
Carl is thrilled.
Item B, Globe Community Center Playground Presentation. Linda and John?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I think in your packet you have renderings of the future Community Center Playground. Are we able to pull those out? Okay. Thank you.
I had promised no presentations, but.
Crowd needs to see.
Great. So this playground, the funding was provided to us from BHP through their tremendous investment in our regional and City of Globe Recreation Master Plan. And so, oh, good, and this is actually in the colors that it will be. The package is called Shine. It's very upbeat and sunny, and it will just be beautiful at the community center. So their investment in playground equipment was $250,000, and then we qualified for the Grant Match Program through Game Time, and so, which turns into a, basically a 50% off sale. So this system is nearly a $300,000 system that with the grant program, we'll be able to purchase at about $136,000. And so we just received approval from BHP to use the remainder of that funding for other amenities at the park, including a potential shade structure, Ramada, additional trees, barbecues, and possibly a few more tables to really round out the offering at the community center. And so this wingset demonstrates, the first swing is a face-to-face with the parent or caregiver and then the child, so that encourages interaction between the caregiver and the child. The next seat over is a seat for a child or a small adult that has developmental difficulties. And then the next two are infant bucket seats, and then the next two are traditional saddle seats. Can we go to the next one? Great, thank you, Danny. And so this system will be bigger than the current one we have. It's a span of, I believe, it's just under 30 feet. And so there's lots of fun climbing structures, monkey bar type systems, and that's what you see in the back there with the rings hanging off, a little more modern merry-go-round, still have the same kind of traditional fun. I know that when we were planning the playground at Copper Rim, our principal always said, "If there's not an element of danger, the kids are not going to be interested." So hopefully, Risk Pool's not listening, but it's going to be a fun. It's super high. It's going to be a lot of fun for the kids. And then on the other side, there's another slide. So we'll have two slides for the system.
Any questions, comments, Freddie?
So when can we see the rollout? What's the timeline on that?
Well, it's been ordered, and because of material shortages and everything, we're about 12 to 14 weeks out. So we're going to see everything coming to market, basically, the system here, the system at the community center, early springish.
Great.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to add on, because of course, we started looking at the dimensions on this, and one of our concerns, visiting the site, of course, is always expansion and excavation. The first initial part of it is actually using the footprint that's there. We're just incorporating the swings with the play area. So that's already been excavated. The only one that's actually kind of extended is the lily pad, or I don't know what that little spinning device.
Yeah, the leaf.
Merry-go-round and the leaf. So those are, and then once we actually get to Ramadas, benches and all that, that is actually is going to be poured above ground. We're not going to have to do, because I know with the pool discussions and even with this type of, we want to make sure we minimize our excavation efforts in there. One of the areas where we were able to save money is the wood chip will be delivered to our yard, and we'll spread that out, because it was a considerable amount of dollars that they charge to bring that material and then spread it out for this location and the community center. And then also, we'll be doing the takedown of the existing equipment. And I'm hoping to actually utilize some of that from some of the other parks that are missing some pieces, but it wouldn't be a full unit being moved to another park, because those are, I was here when we set up the first playground equipment, and that's deep in concrete, so some of it may get damaged, taken out. I mean, that's the nature of that beast. Plus, there is a reason why we're replacing it. It's outdated.
Go ahead, Mike.
So is this the plan and the layout for what it's going to be up at the community center?
Yes.
Okay.
John, will you be pouring borders for the wood chips, or is it just how are you going to secure the wood? going to secure the wood chips within an area?
With this pricing on City Hall and the community center, they actually, the contractor will be placing a concrete border. We kind of looked at that previously in years past. We tried PVC and different types of borders, and the concrete actually border was the best to keep it confined and limited, but they'll actually be doing that work.
Great.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, John, I know that all equipment, all these investments require maintenance over the years to make them last, and they have some warranties. Is the newer stuff, at least any more resistant or maintenance-free, as much as you can get, or does, by updating this, does this take any burden at least off your guys for what they normally would be doing?
Well, I actually think we've extended the life of the equipment we have now.
Yeah.
Anybody, even with the gentlemen that come out, do site visits, they know it's been extended as long as it could. So we've gotten our money's worth out of existing equipment. I think where our equipment actually has taken a hit with the COVID and then spraying, you know, every day and pressure washing, so I'm sure we're going to have to, the maintenance part of this, once the equipment gets out there, we're going to have lots of families and kids on this equipment. So there's still included, you know, you know, maintenance to be done, but it's in a good, a better level of degree as far as trying to fight a virus. So longevity, I think we're probably still in the same calendar as this other equipment, but like, if you remember, this other equipment that we have sitting outside was installed in 1998. So we've gotten our cycle out of that.
John, thank you.
Any questions coming? Thank you both. We look forward to the new equipment, both here and at the community. I'm impressed how many people are actually using this one in front here. How many people every evening are here?
Every day. All the time. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Go to consent calendar. Matters listed in the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. Public hearing items are designated with an asterisk. Prior to discussion of the consent agenda, the mayor will ask whether any member of the public wishes to remove a public hearing item for separate consideration. Members of the council and/or staff may also remove any item for separate consideration. A, consideration of waiver of Section 2-4-10A prior discussion rule to allow action on the balance of the consent agenda. Accounts payable: $215,356.78. Consideration of approval of council minutes: October 26, 2021 minutes. Consideration of agreements: less than $25,000. And contract number CS-2021-0022 with advanced air systems in the amount of $10,000 to furnish and install an AC unit at the Water Barn office. And consideration to approve the IGA for the Globe Police Department participation in the Arizona Child Abduction Response Team. Is there anybody from the public, the staff, or the council wishes to move any of these items separately?
Mr. Mayor, if there are other comments or discussion, I motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
We have a motion, a second for approval of the consent agenda as read. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Any abstaining? Motion passed. New business. Item A, review and consideration of the execution of contract number GS-2021-0032 with Sandoval Elevator Company in an amount not to exceed $29,905 for the electrical damage repairs necessary for the elevator at the Cobra Valley Center for the Arts building, with a funding source to be determined. John?
And, and, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm going to start off with a little background on this. Our understanding is that the, in the way the lease is written, the Center for the Arts is responsible for the maintenance of the, the old courthouse, including the elevator. There was a, we believe there was a lightning strike that burned out some of the technology in the elevator. They, the Center for the Arts had been looking for quotes and had gotten quotes and was, was putting together, you know, the repair schedule and getting this lined up, but with, they were planning on doing fundraisers with the holiday season coming up, with events coming up. The city took it upon ourselves to, and, and we took it upon ourselves to look at possible insurance claim, that because it's lightning, it may be covered, because it's, it's a little bit pricey on replacing those parts, but we figured we would take the, take the wool by the horns, get it repaired. We don't, we haven't identified the funding. We hope to, by the time we come back for a second read on this, that we have that funding identified, but it needs to be repaired, and in working with Center for the Arts, we've agreed that if the insurance won't cover it, we'll work it out between the two of us as to how to, a fair, a fair split of that, if a split at all. So just knowing that's why we haven't identified the funding, I'll let John finish off on what actually is going on.
Mayor and council, just to update you, I believe you've probably seen in the process, dealing with Genie and even with their quotes, they've kind of varied, and that's why I want to just kind of do verification on that. What we've done in this process, the first initial quote that was, was received by the Center for the Arts was kind of some renovation plus the repair. Once we met with them and the insurance company or their agent came out, did a site visit, we were able to bring that dollar amount down, and that's per the contract price that's listed tonight. Where we were at is, like Paul said, as far as the funding sources, is we're still going to possibly through insurance, because what we need to do is actually pull the panels apart. We can't do that visibly. I mean, we have to pull them out, you know, there's three different electrical panels, and right now, the insurance company needs to have verification if it was possible lightning strike, and we won't know that until we actually start pulling it apart. What I was able to do contacting the elevator company, what you see, the last quote that we received last week was actually a labor cost per the part, because worst-case scenario is the dollar amount that you see before you on this contract. It can go through different levels, from what they explained to me was, the first panel can be actually replaced, and it would repair the elevator. Right now, there's specific things on that elevator that are actually communicating the way they should, so he doesn't know, he doesn't feel it's a total loss as far as the elevator equipment, but we won't know until we start replacing panels. Of course, with the shortage of electrical, in anything really right now, acquiring electrical parts and equipment, so we're looking to order all three panels and go through that series of stages. That's why the labor cost is actually individual. On the last quote, we can save. If it happens to be the first panel, then that's where we stop, and it wouldn't reach this dollar amount. It's actually the first initial, and that's why it's broke down in three different phases. If it goes to the second panel, of course, they'll have to do that, install that second one, and then up to the third. If it's repaired on the first panel, we would actually have, at that time, have already purchased the other two, but we can actually keep those on hand if we have any future, you know, use. He says this elevator was kind of done specific design work and stuff, so there is some things that are specific to, excuse me, to this elevator, like the panels and stuff, trying to make it more historic. So that's where we see some of the dollar variance on that. So we would store those, but the, the labor cost is cut down, and if, hopefully, fingers crossed, either or, at that time, we'll determine if it was a lightning strike by looking at the actual panel where you see visual damage, and we would submit that to, through our insurance, and it would be another different cost.
Go ahead, Fernando.
Just a couple of questions. So from what I read on the background, it sounded like we were going to improve the panel to today's standards on the panel, like something must have been outdated or the technology is advanced.
Yes.
So I would just, generally, insurance policies are contracts of indemnity, which means no better, no worse, so they may only want to pay for what you had. So just be prepared for that and take a look at that, because they may want you to pay the difference between the old panel and the new panel.
Possibly, and, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Shipley, but the, the other thing is, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, I think, I don't think an exact match is available. I think the, the panel that, to replace that is an upgraded panel.
Yes.
So it's, that is the, the only existing panel that will do that job for that, and so, but yeah, it's an interesting question whether they will, you know, only, only pay for what, for the old panel, but, but that is the official, we believe that'd be the official replacement panel, even though it's an upgrade, they just, we'll have to see.
And then the other thing is, is that they're generally going to want to bless whatever you're doing, so they'll want to, you'll want to get that paperwork over to them to make sure they review it before we start paying for it, because they may come back and say they want something different.
And this is one of the benefits of the Risk Pool, is they're, they're very user-friendly and, and try to, try to facilitate this stuff. They don't, but, but we'll have to, we'll have to walk through that process and make sure that it's all going to fit together.
And I'll be happy to help if you need help.
John, oh, go ahead, Fred.
No, I, I just want to add that, you know, for those that are not familiar with how the elevator became an elevator there, it was a long process, oh gosh, probably over 10 years ago, I would think.
Yeah, I gave, I put my fire truck on hold so they could put the elevator.
There you go.
CDBG funding.
So anyways, it's truly a benefit, not only to the center, but the citizens of this community. You know, it's a great building. It's a very historic building. It's, it's beautiful. It's, you know, it's a gem in our downtown area, but it is filled with stairs, if you haven't been in it, even just to get to the front door for most. And so, you know, for those people that, and I'm getting there, having difficulty climbing stairs, the elevator has proven to be a real benefit, so I would just ask this council to consider that when we make a decision on this, that it is a very useful tool for, for the center.
John, thank you. John, I have a question on estimated time with the holidays coming up and really probably needing to have that in service with, you know, Christmas coming up. Is that, is that a timeframe on it, that we might see it?
With the process moving forward, we actually kind of set them on a schedule, hoping that, you know, as far as electronics, that was really the biggest obstacle that we're looking at, to initiate that. Speaking with them as of Thursday last week, we actually have a targeted date of December 15th to have it up and running, so that would actually be before a lot of their events, you know, that they usually do fundraising, even beginning of the year, I think they have the, one of the bigger events. But I won't go into campaigning for that, but I'll let them do that. But one of the things I did want to add is that, working with the elevator company, I did bring up the fact that if it was, you know, a lightning strike, what could we do long-term? Up to this point, it hadn't happened, but does it mean that it still could happen with another? But basically, his, his, his response was, is that the fuses are actually direct, so it should have caught something, but he goes, "There are electronics." You know, there's actually, our main switch on that elevator is actually has, is fused, just like the one, because my concern was that we have that one, we have the one at Palace Pharmacy across the road. So looking at these dollar amounts, you know, you don't realize how expensive they are until you have to start repairing or replacing them. So that's where he says they actually have direct fuses, so that, the lightning strikes usually be deterred by that, or it'll actually blow the fuse. Unfortunately, in this situation, it might not have, but until we determine what it was specifically, from the reports that we had that was a lightning strike, I believe that the bank across the road had some issues as well in that time period, so that's kind of how they determined it might be possibly a lightning strike that it knocked out that block.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mike.
How much demolition is going to be involved in this process on the elevator? John?
There would be no demo. What it is, is actually, they opened some access panels, and everything's actually there. We actually, when we did our site visit myself, the maintenance, Ruben was there with us, the insurance agent was there, and some of the members of their board. It's just three actually in sync panels. It's all electronic, and it's just a locked panel that you can access. So it's really, it's just them taking the time and pulling everything up. Yeah, so it's just lining them up. He showed us what the elevator is doing and what it should be doing, and that's, he did some manual test on it, and that's why I said, he doesn't feel it's a total loss, but he knows that it's possibly the brain of the equipment that's not receiving the signal, and that's why it's not working.
Go ahead.
Like a circuit board of... Yes, yeah, they're, they're all in sync. They're actually stacked right on top of each other, so, so that's how they just go one, two, and three, it's, you know.
Just a little bit of history more on the install. I had several meetings with Kip Culver when our CDBG funding was coming up, and, you know, you can't say no to Kip, once you sit down and talk to him. That's the kind of person he was, so we delayed our fire truck for three years for our next rotation, and he got his elevator at the Center for the Arts, which is great.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if there are other questions or comments, I recommend that we approve, I'm sorry, that we, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, that we approve the executing contract GS-2021-0032 with Sandoval Elevator Company in the amount not to exceed $29,905 for the electrical damage repairs necessary for the elevator at the Cobra Valley Center for the Arts building, with the funding source to be determined, and move to the next regular council meeting for final consideration.
Motion, a second, for approval of Item 5A. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Any abstaining? Motion passed. Thank you, John. Item B, discussion and consideration to approve Resolution 1846, a support resolution urging the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission to keep rural Arizona communities together and establish legislative representation solely rurally, ruled and undivided by adopting the proposed five-plus Eastern Counties base concept district map, and request to waive Section 2-4-10A prior discussion rule. Paul, and Shelley, can you read Resolution 1846, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 1846, a resolution of the Mayor and Council of the City of Globe, Arizona, urging the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission to keep rural Arizona together by considering and adopting the proposed base concept district map as provided. Is council pleased with the reading?
Yes.
Yes.
When, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we last spoke, we had the discussion about the, the five Eastern Counties, presentation of a, of a map, and that's the one that Danny has up there right now. That is, so you know this one, and this is the one that was provided by the group that is working to promote this map. We, we selected the one that keeps San Carlos attached to the Navajo, because that seems to be the way that the, the wind is, is going with the final draft maps, and, and this is the one that, that we are promoting, and the resolution references. Now, I will tell you that the, the second map up here, and Danny, if you want to go with the black and white one, this is the final draft proposal for the City of Globe, and it does allow San Carlos to be tied there. It is not as rural-based as we had hoped. It includes majority, I believe, of Florence and half of Apache Junction. Those, those urban or even suburban population centers tend to pull the, they tend to gather all the attention. Their needs are not that different from us, because we want to be, we're not that far off, but when you're running for election, when you're, when somebody's going to run and you have somebody in, let's say, Wheatfields is going to run versus somebody that lives in Florence, well, the person in Florence has name recognition, they have a, a block of, of supporters already, they got, you know, one-third of the battle already handled, and they only have to get out to Apache Junction, and then part of the rules where somebody in a smaller area has to go and do all that legwork way down in Florence, in Apache Junction. And, and so that's the, I think, the unsung beauty of having a totally rule where, where you have a series of large areas, small communities, there's no one that kind of, you know, takes up all the energy out of the district. Not that it's a bad thing, not that we haven't had good representation with, with council, with Representative Pratt, Dave, Representative Cook, who is from Globe and proves that wrong, that, that he can win, coming from a smaller city, and then, and TJ coming out of Eloy area. But it is our, I believe that, that we're on the right track with the preference to, even though that it, it's not the final, the final draft map, but that we still put that, that call, that pressure to ask for that, those five Eastern Counties to act, to support this map, the one that was presented to us and offered to us that the, the Eastern Group is working on. Now, just for context, and this map is a bear. I tried to, it was 31 megabytes... I tried to, it was 31 megabytes. It's full of all kinds of data. Um, I got a, a smaller version, but it's, um, it's kind of fuzzy, but that, and Danny, if you can put up the one that has the big numbers on it that I just quickly threw in there.
It's pretty good there.
This is, that's the one. So we would be seven. You can see how we kind of horseshoe around the San Carlos, uh, but we're not connected into 19. We go, we go more towards the central, um, and we're, we're split up. So you can see the context. 16 would be the, basically the other half of Penal County and that whole central corridor. We do have the copper corridor in there, um, but we don't have, um, like say, but Florence and, and Apache Junction kind of tip that scale of what I think would be, um, also what we would, would optimal.
Is Gold Canyon included in seven too?
Yeah, Gold Ca- and this Gold Canyon would be included. And I think both, in both maps. And so I don't know if, uh, what's that?
Go ahead.
Oh, I, I don't know if the, I, that's my, just my presentation now. I, I believe we should move forward with the, with the resolution. But I, I know that you, council may have had some conversations, and I think we may have somebody that wants to present or talk about this also.
Yeah, I have a speak card from Jess Bryant. Um, if we could listen to any comments, and then we can ask questions, I guess. We good with that?
Mayor, council, thanks for the opportunity to have this before you again. Um, and please do feel free to ask any questions. Stop me and ask any questions you might have. So, uh, I, I would, I would agree with everything the, the manager said, as if I had wrote it myself in an email here recently. And, uh, and, uh, having said that, uh, that is the sentiment, that, uh, the concern is, is Florence, like Casa Grande and Coolidge, were once rural communities, much like ourselves, but now have become excessively urban and suburban. And, uh, you know, Florence's Anthem and Merrill's Ranch and, and just in, increasing from there. And so, uh, that's the concern, Wells Gold Canyon, Apache Junction, uh, that they will become the center of politics for the, um, uh, for the district. I had an interesting conversation with Mayor Bestic, in which she, she told me her struggles in Penal County, uh, where, where Superior once received a fair share of resources there in Penal County. Now, uh, they are all but excluded from those resources. And so that, that is definitely the concern that, that, uh, we want to keep in mind in our legislative redistricting as well, is that if we have, we have our, our representatives coming from Apache Junction and Florence, they, they may be the nicest people on earth, as, as we met, uh, our new representative Neil Carter, uh, who's from Santan Valley. And Neil's a great guy, uh, but I know that his primary concerns are Santan Valley. Their water problems, their corridor problems, or their possible future interstate problems. Those aren't our problems. And so we don't want to become a backseat to those priorities, to those reasons. Our small communities, we're, we're natural resources, we're, we're, uh, we're rural economies, we're, we're, as I said in the email, we're wilderness-bound communities. We, we deal with the same issues. Although one might be farming, and one might be ranching, and one might be mining, still, uh, those issues are, are basically the same. So we're in this together, and then we, we must, we must press that point in every way we possibly can to this commission that's dominated by, uh, metropolitan minds. Although this commission has been very, very open and very professional and responsible, I would say, compared to the last. Still, they manifest that, uh, that they're preoccupied with the Phoenix and Tucson metro areas. And, uh, and while they have done some for us, they still don't fully understand our need. And so it's up to us to do everything we can, uh, to get that message to them. The, the, they have announced the deadline for public comments, so whatever we will do, public comments, letters, hearings, resolutions, December 4th, that is the last day. After that, they're going to swiftly produce their final maps. And then barring any lawsuits that will inevitably come, that may change their results, we will live with that until 2031. Uh, I do want to point out a couple of things, if there aren't any other questions up to this point. Questions?
Any questions for Jess?
Questions. Jess, on, on this map here, we split Cochise County?
Yes. So, so again, this is a base concept. This is not as though we're saying, this is what you must do or else. Uh, we do want to see the five eastern counties intact as they are, but how, how those, those borders need to ever flow is kind of up to the discretion of the, of the commission. But, uh, the main point there is to exclude Sierra Vista, uh, which is a very urban center. Uh, it would exclude not of necess- not for any necessity other than population, having too much population, but it, it does exclude the map proposal, uh, Tombstone and St. David.
And the yellow, yellow counties go all the way to the border, right?
Correct. Yep. New Mexico, correct. Yeah. Part of the deficiency, I, I would like to point out, part of the deficiency in their proposed, uh, District Seven, not just the urban centers you see there to the, uh, to the south and west, uh, but also to the north and east there, while they have made an, an effort to include our, our incorporated rural communities, which were previously included in the Native American District, uh, Sholo, Lakeside. The train is interfering with my thinking here. Uh, they, they, interestingly, I'm not sure exactly why they do this, but they barely skirt around the city boundaries, uh, for the Native American District in their proposal. And they do place the unincorporated communities of Greer, Alpine, and Nutrioso. Uh, once again, they use them for the land bridge to connect, uh, with the Apaches to the Navajos. And so our proposal demonstrates that you can have a land bridge that's uninhabited, uh, in northeast Hila County and southwest Navajo County. You can accomplish your goal without, uh, putting any of our, our rural communities, uh, in a situation there that they would rather not be in.
Any other questions?
Uh, just a comment, but, um, a lot of that's going to be due to population proportionment, though. So they may have to bring them in just to get the numbers, right?
Well, as, as I demonstrate with the, uh, the purple and yellow, uh, map you saw a moment ago, that, uh, those goals can be achieved. What, the purple and yellow is the latest manifestation. So I took, I took their draft, I took their final draft, as is presented right there. And all I did was I readjusted it to reflect our five eastern counties proposal. So all other dimensions of their, uh, I can't see the number on it, but I think it's District Six, uh, remain the same except, except for how it affects our, our five eastern counties. So, so accomplish the same thing, uh, I would not have been able to submit it if it didn't accomplish their goals. Their, their program is, is wired up to that. If you don't meet all their requirements, it won't submit. So if there's no more questions, I want to give you a couple of updates here, too.
Yeah, I just have one question. Uh, I can't tell on this. Do we incorporate on this proposal, the entire, uh, city of Florence, town of Florence?
No.
In which one?
Partial.
The final draft.
And, and their, and their District Seven, it, I'm not exactly sure how much of Florence it gives or takes, but, uh, but the vast majority of, at the very least, is, is there.
Yeah. I, I don't know. There's some of the new suburban, suburban stuff that's up in the northwest corner. I can't remember the, the housing area, but the, the downtown Florence and the prison area, and, uh, it's, it's definitely a majority of Florence, if not two-thirds, I believe. It's hard to navigate because they don't have city boundaries easily.
Yeah. What concerns me is the proposed, uh, new freeway that, that'll direct traffic towards, uh, the Florence area, and, and they're going to become more urbanized than, than they are now in the next, uh, five years, maybe.
Yeah. Penal County doesn't have the restraints that our eastern counties have all the national forests. They have plenty of room to expand, and they're going to.
Yep.
Yeah. County's a big county.
Yeah, it is. Yeah. I have a few updates I want to share with you on that topic. Uh, first of all, if you adopt this resolution tonight, you will be joining, uh, the communities of Pima, Miami, Thatcher, and Sholo, who have also adopted it so far. Uh, right now, as we speak, the, the city of Winslow is, uh, is, is considering it and, and is expected to adopt it. And upcoming in the next, uh, week or two, we have Winslow, Clifton, Duncan, Payson, Springerville, and Superior, uh, with the possibility of more of our, our local governments, uh, also getting on the agenda soon. So we're not alone in this, and, and tonight you're going to send the message as well that they're not alone in this either. There are several public meetings, uh, coming up. Unfortunately, one, I, I would say one big, uh, black mark I would give to this commission, whereas in their first, their first hearing round after their grid maps, uh, they traveled the state. And they went to every corner of the state. They had, they had four meetings here in eastern Arizona and, uh, and one in Florence as well, uh, that I was able to attend. Uh, this time, they're having, so far it's scheduled, well, well, I guess technically they'll have two because, uh, I, I did find since I found today that they, they will have a physical meeting in San Carlos. Uh, I'm not clear on the date of that. I'd have to look again. Uh, but the only other physical meeting in all of eastern Arizona, uh, will be in Payson. And that's going to be at the Matizel Casino Resort. It'll be on Wednesday, December 1st at 6:00 PM. So our goal now is to rally as much of eastern Arizona as we can to go attend that meeting in person. Uh, I spoke with, uh, Senator Allen here earlier, and she told me that, uh, they're doing the same there in the northeast and have a lot of people already pledged on, uh, attending that meeting in Payson. So it'd be great if we can get folks here in our southern Hila County to, uh, to do that as well. Uh, those are the in-person meetings. The rest are going to be virtual meetings. They had a virtual statewide virtual town hall meeting on the 6th. I did my best to participate in that, uh, yet their technology, I was not able to, to participate. It's their technology from day one has been so frustrating, so many failures and inefficiencies. Um, you have, it's, it's based on some WebEx software, which I think the state uses, and you have to download that software, and I was not able to do it. Uh, at any rate, they will have, they will have another virtual town hall meeting, uh, this Friday, November 12th at 12:00 PM. And, uh, that's, uh, that, that will focus on eastern and southern Arizona. So if it is at all possible for anybody to, uh, to figure out how to participate, and I'm going to try again, uh, you need to, you need to go onto the redistricting website, uh, which is something like IRC dot AZ dot gov, and register for that, and then download the WebEx software, and go from there. And then good luck after that. I've never gotten fast at it. And there will be a physical meeting in Florence on Saturday, November 13th at 10:00 AM at their Florence Community Center. And I'm going to attempt to attend that, but there's another event here at noon I need to be at, so we'll see how that goes. But, uh, that being a little bit closer to us, it's an opportunity for us also to have another chance to, to appear in person and, and, uh, express our feelings. So those are the updates I have, Mayor.
Question?
Go ahead, Mike.
Has Snowflake signed off on this?
Uh, they, they are in progress. Uh, uh, we've been in contact with Snowflake and, and Taylor. Uh, we're just not sure of the, uh, of the meeting date yet and when that will be.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Members Council, um, Jess, the, I, I think the, the, the one thing that, that I, I worry about is if, if they move this map for us, and they back us out of Florence and, and Apache Junction, those numbers have to go somewhere else. There's a ripple effect. Every time they touch one, it, it, it keeps, uh, challenging the neighbors. Are, are there, to this point, have they been very responsive on, on redrawing this? Or I, I guess maybe just what do you think the possibility of them, uh, making significant changes like this?
You know, I, I honestly don't know. Um, that, uh, that November 6th, I, they're under a lot of pressure. So the, they're under a lot of pressure from every side. I mean, I don't, I don't envy their job. Uh, you know, we're worried about rural Arizona, but they have every quarter of, of three or four million people between Phoenix and Tucson that are pulling at them to do different things. Uh, there are, and let me say this, I, I can't emphasize this enough, that, that our agenda here is rural versus metro. And I've encountered through this over the last few months, um, partisan interests on both sides, uh, that have wanted one thing or another. And I've found that very frustrating, disappointing. But I say that because those partisan interests have not gone away. And, and from what I hear, especially after the November 6th town hall meeting, that they've only ticked up and, uh, and they are pushing for something, uh, very different for even our region, rural, between six and seven, uh, to divide them up in very different ways than even what they show now, and to, to affect some other, uh, partisan-based, um, preference. Uh, our issues are rural, you know, and, and I say this, our, when it comes to legislative issues, this council meeting, we've talked so many times, our legislative issues, uh, yes, they are, as, as a party, you can't avoid partisanship, but, uh, as the hearing we had earlier today demonstrate, that, uh, our issues tend to be unique here in rural Arizona, that they, they transcend those traditional barriers. I mean, already the, the communities that I've read off, those are, those are Republicans and Democrats and whites and Hispanics and men and, men and women. I mean, we've already been, uh, demonstrating that those traditional divides are secondary to our rural interests. And I'm very happy and very proud to be a part of that. I can't answer that question directly, Mr. Manager. Uh, it, who knows what will happen? All we can do is just remain in an offensive posture, as I say. Until December 4th, we're going to keep pushing for the, for the thing that represents our interests as loudly and as often as we possibly can. And then after that, what happens, what happens. But, uh, we're going to do our best in the meantime.
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate the updates, uh, email that we're getting. Uh, Shelley, uh, Paul, if we can send a reminder to our council, or maybe get people in that December 4th, um, uh, in person, the Payson.
The Payson one, yes.
Yeah, I, I think the Payson would be the, the one, the, the go-to meeting. And, um, I, I wanted to ask, Mr. Mayor, Members Council, I wanted to ask Shelley to give a little update. She had called, after the last meeting, she had called down there and talked to them about trying to schedule one here. And Shelley, do you want to share with your?
If I could, real quick, that's December 1st, not December 4th.
Yeah. Yes, I have the first. Okay.
Yes, uh, Mayor and Council, I did call the commission to try and schedule a public hearing here in Globe. And the only date that they had, uh, to offer was the 13th. And, uh, we were working with staff to see if we could, uh, get that available.
That was a Saturday.
Yeah, it's a Saturday. And, uh, in the planning, uh, part of that, they, they retracted their, their offer, so.
They didn't want to work Saturday, huh?
Yeah.
They did mention that the, um, meeting in San Carlos, and I think it's close to that date. I don't remember the date of that meeting either, but, um, uh, it was in close proximity. So I think that probably was their decision.
Just a, a quick question, Mayor. So, um, in our little summary, it says to waive the prior discussion rule, but I thought we already prior discussed this.
I think because it's a, a resolution, do we have to do it? Yeah.
The resolution doesn't have to be read, uh, twice. It just has to be read once. But, um, we did discuss it, so, um, it probably should have, or could have gone on, on action without that. But, um, I, I don't, I don't, we have to waive the rule.
Then I would move to, and I would waive to prove, um, waive the rule so we can take action tonight, to approve Resolution Number 1846 in support of the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission to Keep Rural Arizona Together by Adopting the Proposed Five Plus Eastern Counties Draft Final Adjusted Redistricting Map.
Second. Motion and a second for approval of Resolution Number 1846. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. Thank you, Jess. Item C, Consideration and Possible Approval of Resolution 1847, a resolution of support of a grant request by Lumen Technologies for Additional Broadband Capacity and Request to Waive Section 2 Dash 4 Dash 10A Prior Discussion Rule. Paul?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Members Council, um, uh, I was approached, approached by our community representative from, um, uh, Century Link, and, um, uh, who is under different names. And is, um, Danny, is Jeff on, on the line, Marisol? In the Zoom? But, and we have?
Yes, I am.
Oh, there. All right. So we have, uh, uh, Jeff Marisol, who is, uh, on the iPhone here. Um, and, uh, he was there, their company, and I'll let him explain the history of the names, their company, which we, we refer to as Century Link, is applying for additional money, um, I believe from the federal government. Uh, and this is in support of their request to their funder, funding source. Jeff, hi, do you want to, um, kind of give the background and, and what exactly we're, we're, uh, supporting here?
Sure. Thank you, Paul. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I apologize that I'm...
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I apologize that I'm not on camera. I'm actually at the ASU basketball game and I'm going to date myself, I'm outside of the Activity Center for the game with ASU and, and University of Portland. I don't even know what it's called now, but I apologize. Paul, we're actually, we believe this Friday, the Arizona Commerce Authority is going to release $100 million of grants that various providers can apply for. 75% of that, or 75 million, will be for rural. And we're looking to be able to help folks that are either underserved or unserved. And the way the federal government decides who is unserved, if you cannot get speeds of 25 meg download, at least 25 meg, and then an upload of three, if you're less than that, you're considered underserved. So we have looked at this area, Globe, Miami, Superior, Claypool, and anything else in that adjacent area. And we've wanted to augment this with, with fiber coming in from the town of Superior. Right now, we have fiber that goes from AJ and then it terminates in Superior. And this, this grant, if we were, are successful with State of Arizona, would help us take the fiber from Superior, bring it into Globe, and it would, it would be beneficial for Globe in that currently we only serve Globe with a radio. That radio is at max capacity, so we can't expand anything else. So this would be just a benefit for, for all parties in the area because it would give us this redundant fiber path into your area, which, which we don't have right now. And that's really what these grants are, are for. There's, they're, they're for areas that have been underserved over the years. And now there's this, this opportunity through the, you know, federal government and, and the CARES Act, well, it's the Recovery Act money that's coming in, all part of the infrastructure bill that was passed on Friday night and is now waiting President Biden's signature. We, we are, we are up against other providers for this money. There's no guarantee we're going to get it, but we have been told by the corporate, the Commerce Authority that a grant is going to go a lot further, a grant application will go a lot further, when you have the backing of the individual communities where you're trying to, to do this. I, I have letters of support from both Miami and Superior at this time. And I would be honored if you would pass this resolution and we would have this in our, in our quiver when, when we apply for the grant, when those grants open up. And I think any questions, we'd be happy to. Thank you, Paul.
Questions? Thank you, Jeff. Go ahead, Fernando.
Actually, you almost answered my question. I was going to ask if, if this capacity is added, would it be specific to your organization or would it be something that you would share with other providers, internet providers?
That's, that's a very good question, Councilmember. I, I can't see who asked, but yes, the, the fact that there is a redundant path, we, we often share with other providers and we buy capacity from other providers. We have a lot of fiber ourselves, so we tend to sell it. We have a whole separate business that just does wholesale agreements. And, and so the fiber would be available for, for use by other providers if they so desire that and we enter into an agreement.
Jeff, this is Councilman Freddie Rios. By chance, I'm not sure if you've spoken to Hila County, I'm, I'm part of a broadband committee that Hila County was sponsoring probably over a year ago. And, you know, the county's really interested in bringing broadband and, and larger capacities of broadband to, to the region. So I'm not sure if you've had conversation with them, but I think they might be another partner in at least working to, to bring fiber and broadband to this region.
And, and I do know that, that organization, I've had talks primarily in, in, in Payson and we, we have, there's some things coming up that we're going to be able to announce that, that have been a long time coming. And, and I personally have been working on for maybe seven years and it's going to come to fruition. I don't want to let the cat out yet, but it's, it's good for the region. And it's, this is, this, this is an unprecedented time. We are, we are probably never going to see, and I hope we don't ever, because of how we had to get to this point, this kind of money to help providers build to hard-to-serve areas. And that's, that's, that's the issue with rural areas is that, you know, it would have been built out to if it was economical to do it. Well, now with help with a grant, now it becomes economical and, and it's, and everyone will benefit from it. So, yeah, I, it, it's, it's a time we've, we've, we've got to utilize it at this time because I don't know that we'll see this kind of funding in the future.
Jeff, I have a question, Mr. Mayor. What's the amount you're going to be requesting on this grant?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
What is the amount you're going to be requesting on this grant?
It's probably going to be less. It was around the $10 million mark, but I think it's, we're going to back some things out. And so we haven't got the final number yet, but like I said, you know, there's 75, 75 million to go to rural areas and 25 will go to more urban applications in both Maricopa and Pima County. So, you know, they didn't give us a, a max and we don't know yet because we, we feel that the, the guidance is going to come out on, on Friday. And we've been told by the Commerce Authority, you know, we're not going to give all the money to one provider for one project, but they've encouraged us to apply for multiple grants. So we want to keep it probably in that $5 to $10 million range.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. It doesn't appear there's any more questions.
Mr. Mayor, if there are questions or comments, I motion to approve Resolution 18, Number 1847, the resolution in support of grant request by Lumen Technologies for additional broadband capacity and waive Section 2-4-10A prior discussion rule.
Just a point of order, we need to read the resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Could you read that resolution, Shelley?
Yeah, Resolution Number 1847, a resolution of the City of Globe, City Council expressing support for the Arizona Broadband Grant submitted by Lumen Technologies. Is Council pleased with that reading?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, based on the resolution, reading of resolution, do you want me to reread the motion?
Are you good with that, clerk?
Well, the motion and a second.
Okay. Okay, we, we got a, a motion, a second for approve Resolution 1847. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Any abstaining? Motion passed. Thank you, Jeff.
Mayor, Council, thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
Jeff, thank you so much.
Yes, thanks, Paul.
Item 6A, action item, discussion and consideration to designate four additional holiday vacation days from December 27th through December 30th, 2021 for city staff and to authorize the allocation of four additional cured holiday vacation days to all public safety employees assigned to shifts. Paul.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, we're bringing, bringing this back. We had a first read two weeks ago and so we, we brought it back to you. We are, the remaining question was how would this impact public safety? And, and the, the answer is that the, the vacation hours for public safety, we're not able to take that, take that time off. The hours would be consistent with their schedule and how we, we handle those hours. For PD, it would be eight hours because they, while they're on 410s, I'm sorry, 312s, they, they go 312s and 412s, it's still a 40-hour work week. For fire, it would be 11.2 hours per day because they're on a, a different schedule. And if you have any additional questions about either of those schedules, we have Commander Haynes and Chief Robinson here to answer any questions you might have. But I, what I will tell you is it is the same policy, the same rates that we did last year and it was very successful.
Okay.
But they're, but they're here to speak if you need to, need be.
We did this last year, it's the same.
Correct. I, you know, when, when we did our, our, right after that, we, we did the, the group meetings that I went around and, and they were very complimentary of just the, the concept. And, and I, everything I remember hearing, I never heard anybody saying that, that it wasn't handled well or anything like that. But Gary, do you want to start? And then maybe Chuck, you can just, just speak two seconds to this or two, a couple words. All right. You've got two minutes.
Two minutes.
Hey, sit down, Gary.
Mr. Mayor, Vice, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, this was, this is, this was and is very well received. Staff does appreciate, you know, they, they appreciate the opportunity to have the, the time off. Obviously, not all of them can use it during the time period that it's allotted, so having the ability to, to put those in their holiday hour bank and, and use those at a more appropriate time when, when staffing and, and the, the busy season doesn't hinder them from doing so is, is, is greatly appreciated. And I think it's a, I, I think it's a great opportunity and a great show of, of support for, for the entire city staff for them to do that, so.
Chief, does this 11.2 hours, is that coincide with the PTO adjustment because of their schedule?
That's, that's consistent and in, in line with the, the adapt, or the adopted policy that we reviewed and, and put in place. So that, that is correct, it does.
Freddie.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I'm going to go offline on here a little bit, but I heard somewhere that today might be your birthday. Is that accurate?
It might be.
Okay. Well, congratulations and happy birthday.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
They get closer together. And Commander Haynes, you went, just, I, I don't think I warned you about this, but you were here in part of the, last year when we did the vacation. Was that well, well received?
I, I was. And Mayor and Council, there were no negative comments that I, that I've ever heard of. They did it last year. It was well received. It gave them additional hours to take off during the course of the year. And, you know, no, we're not going to disapprove of it if you want to give us extra hours off during the year, so.
We just got to get you staffed up enough, ability to give them time off.
Yeah, exactly. So we're, we're good with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead, Freddie.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, in the past, the city had, had been trying to provide something around the holidays for its employees, you know, in the form of, you know, a, a formal gathering or informal gathering, we'll call it a Christmas banquet. And, and that was great. I mean, we, the ones that wanted to go turned out. But I, I feel strongly that this, this action here touches every employee, not just the ones that want to go to that party or that banquet. So this is, this is really a great move for, to show the appreciation to, to all the city staff because it touches every single one of them. I just want to apply, applaud thinkers and the think tank that thought about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
No comments or suggestions or, I'd like to motion that we designate a four hour, four additional holiday vacation days from December 27th through December 30th, 2021 for city staff and to authorize the allocation of four additional accrued holiday vacation days to all public safety employees assigned to shifts.
Second.
We have motion.
Are we supposed to wave?
No, this, this is coming back.
We got a motion, second for approval of Item 6A. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I just wanted to thank Pam Leonard for helping work through this and making this happen. This is, you know, this, and, and to the finance and payroll, it gets a little bit, like I say, it's something that's a, a good thing, but it's a little bit extra load on their plate, but they're happy to do it. And, but thanks city staff for, for implementing this and, and making sure it all works out. And so, thank you.
You bet. Please let all the department heads, let the, all our employees know that we truly appreciate all the work they do.
They, they, they get it. They receive it loud and clear. They're very, very thankful and, no, it's a, it's a, it's a wonderful way of showing your, your appreciation.
Any further discussion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, just so you know that they still will, they still will have department parties that they throw on their own. Okay. So we'll not go without.
Call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Any abstaining? Motion passed. Action Item 6B, consideration and possible approval of the grant and aid agreement between the Tohono O'O'odham Nation and the City of Globe to accept a Tohono O'O'odham 12% grant in the amount of $14,000, $14,925.58 for wildland personal protective equipment for the Globe Fire Department. Chief Robinson.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, back in May, Chief Granger, with the blessing of Chief Renon with Tri-City, and I sat down, looked at, at things we needed to prioritize for grant funding and, and the opportunity to do so in a collaborative manner that will, that also helps our, our chances in being awarded some of this funding. In doing that, May, we, we put in for just under $15,000 for wildland personal protective equipment. That equipment includes backpacks for, for carrying your fire shelter, the fire shelters themselves, as well as some helmets and, and I believe a few other additional items, smaller items included in that. On October 21st, we received word that, that the Tohono O'O'odham Nation funded that request for, for the total amount requested. Based on that, Jeannie contacted and received back the grant and aid agreement that's up for consideration tonight, that just accepts, accepts the, the funding and allows us to, allows us to receive those funds that we can then execute and put, put into, put into equipment that will then be issued to personnel across both agencies to meet the needs that we have. Again, that equipment is, you know, that equipment is equipment that we then don't have to fund out of our own, out of our own budget and it, it'll help us going forward as we look, as we look to continue to, to grow and, and keep our wildland program functional and, and operating in the way we need to.
Fernando.
I was, when I was reviewing it, it sounded like we had to make sure that we spent the money in time, like there was a deadline, like I think it was in December or something like that. Can, will you be able to get the equipment that fast and/or does the money just have to be spent and the equipment can arrive later?
I, I believe what will need to be happening is the money will need to be allocated by, by that time. I've got to go back and review that to make sure, but in other words, we'll have, we'll have identified the equipment and placed the orders for that. We can't control supply chain, supply chain concerns. And pretty much every grant out there, we, we face the same thing with the assistance firefighters grant for our self-contained breathing apparatus. I've been dealing with the, the same thing with a, a micro grant for AFG that, you know, we're, we're well over almost two years into that and trying to just get the purchasing done because of availability of, of stuff and some FCC requirements because of what that required. But they've been, most grant providers have been very, very accommodating, very understanding with that. We'll do our best, you know, we'll, we'll have the stuff in terms of, of identified, allocated and ordered. I have no doubt we'll have that, that taken care of very quickly. The, and then we'll, we'll follow up with, with any concerns that, that may present as a result of supply chain stuff.
Chief, just a comment, just to, so we all understand the concept of the shelters, does that give shelters for all the personnel, Tri-City and Globe? I know, and, and maybe a little bit, those need to be rotated out or expire. I know, and maybe a little bit, those need to be rotated out or expire, and the cost of those now?
The cost of those sits now, based on size, anywhere from just under $400 to just over $400 apiece. Those do require rotation out. We have acquired some, just in numbers, same with Tri-City. So it won't replace everyone we have, but it will replace everyone we need to replace to make sure we have in service those. The packs, you know, it won't replace every pack, but it will, it will provide, it will provide the needed, especially to update to new personnel that have come on board, and any that are, any that are in need of replacement.
Thank you. Any other questions, comment?
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor. I am so pleased with our department heads doing this forward-thinking planning, because this occurred in May. And they all have been doing this for quite a while now, in trying to beat the bushes to get grants to service their departments, and in turn, to service the needs of this community. I'm very impressed with this work that's ongoing, and I really, tonight, Gary, you're on the spot, thank you for planning like that. It reflects a lot of just hard work to do the paperwork, and then coordinate that with the rest of our departments to make that happen. So, again, I'm very impressed with our department heads.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, that is one thing about, again, all the departments, they're always seeking those opportunities and taking advantage, and they ask for help, but they do the heavy lifting. Let's see, library in the audience.
I would make, I would like to make a motion to approve the grant and aid agreement between the Tohono O'odham Nation and the City of Globe, accepting the Tohono O'odham 12% grant in the amount of $14,925.58 for wildland personnel protective equipment for the Globe Fire Department, and request to waive the prior discussion room.
We have motion, a second for approval of Item 6B. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed.
Mayor, council.
Thank you, Chief. Next, we have late agenda items.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have two late agenda items that we add on to the E session. There were one about High Desert Humane Society, and the other one might be Wallman Road. Is council willing to include those in their E session?
Sure, yes. Need a motion?
No, no, I just want to make sure that, I think the whole thing about the late agenda items is we, you know, we want to make sure everybody's on board with bringing this late. We will not bring you anything we believe is urgent and acceptable, but it's your chances to, final say, to say, yeah, this is a good thing for late items.
We'll add those two on E session. Okay, we have a second call to the public, do we have anybody, any other speaker cards or anybody online?
Nothing on the email, nothing on text.
Scheduling the meetings?
Nothing additional, just the moving of the December meetings forward, the first and third Tuesday.
November's on regular schedule.
November's regular, we'll have that meeting right before Thanksgiving.
And do we bring the December 3rd meeting up, or that is?
Yeah, that will, the December 3rd, let's see, let me.
You have December 7th.
No, I mean, the 3rd is going to be with San Carlos?
Yeah, but that is not a quorum, so that's not something we need to deal with at this level.
Okay. Any future agenda items?
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, like I say, the work group schedule has been working very well, everybody's been keeping the schedule, we're loading those agendas up, and we'll be giving you updates on that. But that has filled that gap to get those late, those future agenda items. But if you do have something that you're thinking about, you know, it's always the time to bring that up.
Okay. Do we have motion to go into executive session? Moved. Motion, a second, to go into E session, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion passed.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, before they cut up.